The Grand Forks County Commission will come to order. All commissioners with the exception of Commissioner Peach and Commissioner Tom are present. The matter, the first matter is the approval of minutes. We have a motion and a second to approve of this. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, and it's a pass. Next, the approval for the order of the agenda.
I don't know, I didn't get the name of the year.
Aye.
Rumors Tavern.
Rumors Tavern out of Finley. And we're gonna, where is the other one at?
I don't recall.
Well, actually, that one more up here. Let's just take it for. For F right before the county board equalization.
For E. Yeah, was it from the tavern as the agenda as.
Okay.
Again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll get you on the road to Finley, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, motion to approve the order of the agenda.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. It's passed. Approval of the consent agenda.
With the amendment number D.
So this is.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda approved. So we will start with rumors tavern from Finley. Can come up. Like the phone.
Hello. I'm looking to get a special permit to serve alcohol at a wedding, dance reception, person friends of mine.
You have the application.
I mailed it. That's why you called me. Did you, did you send the fee?
An honorized and a $25 check.
Okay, I have it downstairs.
Yeah, because I was surprised to do that the day after I mailed it.
Yeah. I'm surprised it wasn't. So I don't know exactly where it is. It was approved. Did you discuss with the Sheriff's Department at all?
And.
And. And you're having it, on what date are you having it and where?
It's the 25th, and it's, it's in Hatton, but it's been served by Works County. And it's on a work.
But it is in Grand Forks County.
Yep.
And.
This is full class made by my son.
Sure.
He said they would have.
I don't think there was anything on that application that she hasn't just told.
Okay.
Just snare.
Chairman, both members of the commission, I haven't seen her receive the application. I believe you reached out to our office. But there is a form that we have individuals that are requesting to have events involving alcohol complete. It's a series of questions like two pages and it's basically to see if they, they need security or not. And if it is to be shared, some of the studies are not. I haven't seen that. I haven't seen any, heard anything of this event. So we haven't been able to evaluate that at this point.
I got the application on Friday. Wasn't it Friday?
I believe so.
And so I told her it was too late. The only way that this could happen is if she pays with the name announced, have the agenda amended. What could be done is you could approve a contingent of on the shares and if he doesn't approve it then.
Works for me.
Number two.
Give me. Okay. Can I get that? Right, okay. All right, just talk to anybody down there?
Yeah, oh, yeah, the top four of the police department. Over there now.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll message.
We have a motion to approve it. We have a second. And that's.
Continue on the sheriff's side.
So approval by the sheriff, all right?
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, just like, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed, okay, contingent on the sheriff agreeing.
Excellent, thank you so much, thanks.
Okay, board of equalizations.
Mr. Chair, you don't want to convene us.
We have a motion to adjourn the commission meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Recession.
A recess, yeah, to the recess of the commission meeting. And then a motion to. Commence the county board of equalization.
So moved.
All in favor, aye. But.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have in your pocket a preliminary comparison of the 2021 and 2022 tax valuations, the increases and decreases. Also submitted was a copy of the agricultural value per acre for the 2022, 2022 assessment. You have any questions on that or votes? Okay, as provided by North Dakota Central Code 57-1201, the first order of business is the equalization assessments in cities. If there are any individuals or members of city or to be equalization present, they could be heard at this time. But here from a city in Grand Forks County that wishes to appeal their value. Anybody in the city. One city was not able to hold their equalization meeting due to a climate weather. Therefore, the county board of equalization needs to prove their 2022 assessments.
Chair.
Yes.
And to approve the north of city assessments based on circumstances.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2022 assessments. We have a second.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion on that matter? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion is passed.
We also need to approve the 2022 assessments of all cities and classes of property as returned by the city board to the equation.
I would entertain a motion to approve the 2022 assessment of all cities.
I agree, class. I approve the 2022 assessments of all cities and classes of property as returned by the city board to the equalization.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is passed.
The second order of business is the equalization of assessments in townships. Race, Kingston, Niagara, Wally Townships are not able to hold their township equalization meetings. And so whether their county board of equalization needs to prove their 2022 assessments.
There are other question.
Yes.
Can we approve those four townships and then the rest of the townships in the same motion? Do you need two more?
I think we need two of the ones that did not, or gather me now, I'm slow writing about, we've got race, Inglewood, Wally and Niagara. Niagara, okay.
I'll make the motion that the. Race, Inglewood, Wally Townships.
Okay, do we have a second? Second, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And I should ask if there are any individuals from any townships that wish to appeal their value at this time. Township. Or some individual wish to appeal their township value. Okay, so in that there are no appeals from property owners or others from townships. It is recommended that the 2022 assessment of all other townships and classes of property be approved as returned by the township board to the equalization.
We have a motion to approve all other townships. Second by Commissioner Inge, any further discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes. Thank you. I entertain a motion to adjourn the board of county equalization.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, I guess we procedurally do the motion.
So moved to.
Reconvene.
Reconvene now.
Okay, second by Commissioner Inge, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's approved, then we can go back to the county business. Which is next to Grand Sky.
Brad Gurkot's on the phone, commissioners.
Okay, Brad.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. I am here today to request approval for third-party oversight on the construction concrete repair project that we put before the board the last meeting and had that approved. I should have put this forward at that same time, but I missed it. And so I'm catching up with my paperwork. So this is a request to provide third-party oversight for the concrete repair pavement project that was approved three weeks ago. There is adequate budget dollars in the 2021 state allocated funds to accomplish this project. And I am requesting that CPS be approved to do this work there, the civil engineering function. And they're one of two of the third-party inspectors that the commission has approved in the past. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Um, Mr. Gurkot, this is Debbie. I was wondering if it's at the same rate as the other third-party oversight companies.
Say that question one more time, please, Debbie.
So is it, are we paying them at the same rate as the other third-party oversight that they've done?
So the same, their rates have not changed for a couple of years. So yes, I guess is the correct answer to your question.
Thank you, Mr. Gurkot. Can we have a motion for that?
Was it Grand Skies? Be allowed to award the third-party inspection task. CPS estimated budget $22,000, with the understanding that it comes out of the state allocated funds in the budget.
Thank you.
Second.
And second, we have by Mr. Ross, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Anything further, Mr. Gurkot?
That's it for today, compliments.
Excellent, thank you. Have a good day.
Commissioner, excuse me, thank you, appreciate it.
And next we have Red River Bio Refinery Bonds.
Commissioner, this is Michael Slade from UMB Bank. I don't know if Debbie Nelson is going to speak on this, but we've been requested by the bondholders, UMB that is, to come in as successor trustee on the Red River Bio Refinery Bonds. Previously, we've served as successor trustee on the 2018 issue. There was a reisslement to 2021. They're in trouble again and have asked UMB to come in as the successor trustee. Under the terms of the indenture, the county has the right to consent to that removal of the prior trustee. And I should note that the borough here is in favor of this, as, as are all of the bondholders. I'd be happy to ask if there are any other questions you might have.
Yes.
No question. We even have a motion to approve. Trustee from all the trusty running back to that.
Yes.
I did email you the document.
Yeah.
It also was sent to. Swan's dad, and she made.
I see Miss Swan said you're on. Do you have any comments on this matter?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I did have an opportunity to review the documents provided by Ms. Nelson, and I have no legal concerns. Thank you.
Will we approve the trustee on this bonds from when the trustee will be back?
Second, any further discussion? All, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Slade, do you have anything else?
No, thank you, and thank you to all the members of the commission.
Okay. Public Health is next.
Chairman, both the members of the commission, I'm Michael Doolis of Grand Forks Public Health, here to do a COVID-19 update. Next slide. As you can see, Grand Forks County is hanging around in the low level of the CDC COVID community level guidance. So what the low level means is that there's an overall low case burden in the community. As well as low hospitalizations in the community and hospitalizations aren't matching up a large portion of the overall inpatients in the hospital system. Next slide. So we've had a little bit of, we had a little bit of a dip last week. Cases are backed up, the running rate of, right around 14 cases per 100,000. Or sorry, 20 cases per 100,000 right now, somewhere in that range. You know, we are still seeing a relatively consistent month of testing, but we are seeing a slight increase in our present positivity. Vaccinations are still happening, but we aren't seeing, we're seeing some, but not a ton of new vaccines. Next slide. So.
I got one question. You know, you talk about 106 positive tests. I kind of assuming we have more cases than that because a lot of people know we're using home tests, so you don't have a way of factoring that into it.
Mr. Chairman, we don't have a really good way of, of understanding the, the number of tests that are happening right now that aren't being reported as well as the number of cases. So that's why we, we're keeping an eye on the hospitalization count as well. As well as looking at wastewater, we did have some slides on that. But all that together, you know, does give us a reasonable picture. And if we look at what was done for flu tracking before the pandemic, we're starting to kind of follow line with what they previously would be doing for flu monitoring.
Thank you.
Thank you, back to the next slide. So we are at 20 cases per 100,000. The cases are still staying relatively young. And a fair number of cases right now are individuals who have previously reported as vaccinated. Overall, we are seeing a relatively low number of people hospitalized with anywhere between zero and the max I've seen in the past two weeks. It's like five people hospitalized that all true with COVID-19, either active or recently off of monitoring. You know, when we compare this to where we were at previously with the previous dashboard metrics, you can see that the numbers on there, we're still staying relatively low. You know, that said, our new cases are at about 20.7, which would put us in the orange category on that, you know, previously. But overall, the, the case activity and the changes and stuff like that have been relatively minor. Next slide. So when we look at wastewater surveillance, so this is a, a recent product from the wastewater surveillance slides that we get. Where they started to zoom in a little bit more, and you can't see, you know, as well on, on the screen, but there is a. There is like a bar looking at the cases and your wastewater numbers are, you know, generally following cases, not as closely as they recently were. A question was brought up if Grand Forks County and Cass County, if our wastewater data may be a little bit more diluted because people are allowed to, people are allowed to discharge their pump pumps for part of the year and into the sanitary sewer system. You know, some people may forget to switch over. So that question was brought up that has been weighed pretty heavily on the minds of the people at NDSU that do this data. And they're looking into it, but the overall think that it is still relatively reflective of the field of case activity. Excellent. And this is comparing our current wastewater activity to what we've seen previously. So with our big Omicron outbreak, you know, went way up and then, you know, around February it went way back down. So the, the numbers have stayed relatively within that, you know, relatively low overall. Next slide. And then where we're at compared to previous years, our numbers have been slightly higher, running right around that 20 cases per 100,000 area. But it's been relatively consistent. If, you know, even if we weren't getting a good idea on cases, we'd still expect to see more cases showing up. But we'd expect to see more demand at places like the Frank Polite Center where people tend to go to get tested if they need it for work or things like that. So we would expect to see more if there was more of a widespread outbreak or there was more of an impact of the community. And then just looking at the national perspective, you know, things are relatively, you know, relatively low here right now. But we are watching cases kind of move across the country. So the upper right corner in the northeast of the United States, they had pretty consistently high case counts for probably the last month, month and a half. You know, and with the increase in hospitalization, and then we started to see those kind of move out. First, across the Upper Midwest into Minnesota, and then we saw them start to move down south. So cases have been a little bit higher in, you know, Wisconsin, Michigan for the past month or so, those are starting to go down. But we are seeing case increases and hospitalization increases in northern Minnesota as far, as far west as Hubbard County. So, you know, there's a chance that we could be seeing, you know, further case progression, you know, in, into this area. This will be probably our first real test of kind of the new CDC guidance and see how that impacts the community. You know, as far as hospitalizations, whereas we aren't, you know, as focused on the case counts. Oh, with that, I am open to questions.
Any questions?
No.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Next, we have Global Friends Coalition.
Chair, commissioners, I'm my own sideline, I'm the vice president of Global Friends, and I'm here to present on that we want to start having Church, Church World Services to begin settlement with Global Friends. So the first slide, please. I'm a little shorter than everybody else. I need to stop. Let me tell you, my, my students tell me that I'm short. So just while she's finding it, I'll just start to talk. So Global Friends used to partner with LSS with, as far as resettlement and integrating new refugees into the community. So LSS has used to do all the resettlement and now that they dissolved and they've gone into something called LIRS. So we want to begin resettlement of refugees in Grand Forks. The number of people that are being resettled here has greatly decreased. Our numbers are way down. So when Global Friends was partnering with Lutheran Social Services or LSS, we were integrating these refugees into the Grand Forks area. So we want to talk about the new agency, Church World Services, that's going to do resettlement and would work with Global Friends. And we can go to the next slide. This is just a slide of the refugees that we've had in Grand Forks starting in 2007. And you can see in 2007, we had 30 refugees. 2008, it went up by 30 and we had 60. Then in 2009, it was up by another 30 and then it leveled off. And then in 12 and 13, we peaked. And then it was constant in 14, 15, 16, and then started decreasing again. And in 2021, we're down to one free case in each year. A free case is one person. They're not connected to any other family. They're just a lone individual that's come to Grand Forks for whatever reason. And the one in Grand Forks right now is a Somali that's actually living with Elias from Steers. Just a friend and settled there. We can go to the next slide. On this one, we're talking about LSS or Lutheran Social Services and Lutheran Immigration and Refugee Services, which is LIRS. So again, as I said, when LSS closed, then LIRS opened this, an office in Fargo. And they received a state contract for refugee resettlement, but they've just committed to resettle in Fargo and Bismarck. And there's a hundred mile radius that they don't resettle. So we're not getting those refugees from that Fargo is resettling. So as I said before, we have a free case, which is a family with no ties. And most of the people with family ties would be someone who's reunification or reuniting with families. And again, each one of these, when these individuals are coming in through LIRS or through Church World Services, each individual has to be vetted and background checks are done on them before they come in. So it is a process that they've really been checked before they come in. And we can go to the next slide, please. This is the funding and the capacity considerations or CWS or Church World Services. We set our capacity at 100 individuals, which is what they recommended. But we'll probably only get 50% of that or probably 50 right at first. And half of these refugees will be children. A lot of the families are very large families, so they have several children, many times up to eight or nine. So our chosen approved capacity, there's no guarantee that we'll get that many, but we're, we're hoping that we get at least 50%. And we can go to the next one. The possible countries are Somali, Somalis, DRC or Democratic Republic of the Congo, Syria, Iraq, Burma, and Ukraine in the future. Because it takes a year and a half to two years for refugees to get into the pipeline and to be vetted and brought in. There's mixed messages right now on the Afghans. Some people, some agencies say yes and some say no. And with the Ukraines, they're thinking that a lot of them hopefully will be able to return to their home country. And that's what most of them are hoping. They're kind of staying in, kind of around that area, Poland, so that they can hopefully get back into the Ukraine. We go to the next slide. And this is just showing the number of volunteer hours that Global Friends has served. So in 2012, 10 years ago, we had 120 new Americans served and we had 2,000 volunteer hours. And I'm not going to go through this all, but you can see that the, the numbers that we've served have, you know, increased, decreased. And we started with 120, 120 new Americans. And then in 2020, we had 140 new Americans. And we still were giving 2,600 volunteer hours. And right now, we have a lot of volunteers that just want to get started, but we just don't have new Americans or refugees for them to serve. But we still stayed at that 2,600. So even though our numbers are down, Global Friends is continuing to support and volunteer. But we still stayed at that 2,600. So even though our numbers are down, Global Friends is continuing to support and volunteer. And the next one, Global Friends proposed RNP capacity. RNP is reception and placement capacity. And if you see the SIV, that's a special immigrant visas. The ones who have, for some reason, have a visa that they would be able to come in under special circumstances. So in 2023, which will begin in October of 2022. We're hoping 90 refugees with 10 sieves with our 100 capacity. 2024, the same thing. And then in 2025, hopefully we can increase our sieves to 15 with 105 capacity. And the next one is the funding for CWS and that's for 2023, which begins in October 2022. So we would hope to get $1,225 for each individual for direct assistance. Now, direct assistance is for what takes place even before they get here. So before their arrival, like setting up an apartment, getting it furnished, getting food into it. And then their daily living costs. Their airline tickets are a loan. So they have to pay back their airline ticket to get to the United States. That is through Immigration Services. And then the 1,050 administrative costs, that would be the salary. For two new caseworkers. It could be office space supplies. That's how that can be used. And then down here, the, the funding that they're going to give us would be 1,050 times the 100. Individuals, which would be 105,000. And then the same thing, 1,225 times 100 would be 122,500. For direct assistance with a total cost of 227,500 coming from Church World Services. Church World Services is non-religious affiliated. So. You cannot, they can ask you for churches, they can ask you for church religion and you can give that to them. But you cannot. Go out and give your religion to them unless they've asked you something that you can tell them. So it's not any, no church affiliation. There's all kinds of churches in the Church World Services. All right. Questions? Comments? Anything?
Yes. The question is, are this information only or are you asking us to do something?
This, I think this is just information only.
Yeah, I met with Ms. Schaub a week ago and that's why she hasn't came. They wanted to provide this much information to the people.
And we do have backing from a lot of the, or from most of the community. Everybody's looking at it as a, as a good thing to happen and we certainly are.
Any other questions? Very much.
Thank you.
Mr. West.
Good afternoon. A couple tidbits for the board. We're knocking on the door of 80 different flood sites in the county. So our department is extremely busy. Honestly, I don't even know how many like this just keeps going all the time and we added on the spreadsheet. But we're busy. We've ordered a few thousand feet of culvert and we'll wait for that, of course, to come in. Nothing, nothing supplied like it used to be, but we're working through it. Had a bridge burnout today. Between Danville and Gilby, a farmer lit a ditch on fire on legal drain 12 and burnt up part of a bridge. So it was a fun way to spend my lunch. Sarcasm.
Too good.
Yeah. The only good thing is, is it's not on a very heavily used road at all. Matter of fact, it's the whole volume as it possibly could be. Nobody lives on it. It just provides access to a field. And it's, it goes to a farm, one farmer's field and he's got access another way and he's the guy that lived it on fire. So. Nobody to blame on himself and other, other folks that would use it in the state of North Dakota to get access to their. Wildlife. Free chicken land. So very, very large stuff, but. A positive note, the new Northwood Bridge is open.
I've driven it. Looks. Not beautiful, but it really is a nice long fixed bridge. So there you go.
Yep. That's plain Jane, basic, but functional, very functional. Yeah. Yeah. Tanner, gravel supplier, gravel all the township roads. We, okay, that was done. Yeah. So we did that for the township because during construction, it was muddy and wet. Ripped them up pretty good. So good case effort for them. Eating job starts Thursday, which is awesome. They're starting on Columbia Road south of town here. And then worked away up to 26, always the temp in and do a five, four go down. So that's great. That's good that they're doing it early in the season. That's real good rather than waiting till the end of the year dealing with cold temps. So. That's, I think there's any questions? One item for consideration, we have a direct request would be the board remembers back in, let's see. January. Otterdale Power made a request to come and buy some land around Congo 11 by the camp for an upgrade power station. February 15th meeting, we obtained permission from the board to sell the land. The April 5th meeting, we got permission to, the board approved selling 2.69 acres for $10,000. And we're here today with the final documents that have been. I believe Ms. Wong said has reviewed and approved them. I have reviewed and approved the plaque or the surveyor certificate and we're here for. If all the things okay, final, final signature and sell the land. We do have a representative from Otterdale Power here with us with a check, I believe. And the original papers too.
Well, we've already approved the sale.
Yeah, right.
Final document.
Yeah.
We just have that.
Sure. Yep.
I would make that motion. Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Ross to move the sale and sign the final documents. Second by Commissioner Ian. Any other discussion on this matter? I think we've talked about it quite a bit. So. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion approved.
Thank you. Would you like these, the originals to sign?
We're gonna have to sign those.
And we will be available in the morning then. Yeah.
I will not be at my desk in the morning, but I will lay them on the side. I'll be teaching. I'll be up here.
Oh, okay.
So.
Cause the representative would like to, if possible, swing by in the morning and grab them.
I know, maybe. Right now because. I will be available all day. The chair signature.
Uh, they need to be notarized. Great.
I'm not, I'm present, so.
Perfect. Is that going on highway department?
It's about the bridge up there.
Wow. All right. Then you'll have to get list of copies.
Well, they're going to be recorded. What? You want to copy?
We have to record.
2150? No.
Oh, 2150? Yeah.
Yeah. So the next issue, I guess I could start a little bit, I suppose. Okay. Yeah, so number five. Number five, so now. We've, we've talked about this before in the past and there's some representatives that live along this order here today to discuss that road and flooding issues. You know, just for the boards. Recollection back in February 15th, this is the stretch road. I did ask for some funding for. Our funds to spend down there and they've been obligated to other things, but. At that, both at same time, I've been working with our Tony Water Resource District on doing a study down there. To find out what it would take to make it a dry road. That's gonna, it's gonna mean big money, you know, without even doing a study, we know it's. bigger bridges, taller bridges, racing road, it's moving there. I think it's possible, but it's still going to be a big dollars. So, but we're doing a study with the water board that probably won't be done until. I'm going to say the end of summer to find out what it would take. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it's twice as much as I'm thinking. Maybe it's half. I don't know. You don't know until we do the numbers and do a bunch of detailed engineering to know that. But it has been on our radar for a while. Obviously, that, well, that whole mantle quarter always is, you know. The Turtle River from, especially you start getting in the Mexica area through Madville, the also is that area floods majorly. Hope those roads underwater for. Spitball, like up in that also area, six plus weeks, eight weeks maybe this time they're underwater. I'm telling you, number five, something that go was under for, for the most part, that same amount of time. It was a stretch in there where the water, it went up and then it went down. We did a little bit of fixing, pulled up some of the gravel. Had gone with do that and then water came up again and washed it off again. And then sensible with up again, hoping it stays down. But. It's just something on our radar that we would like to see something done someday. I don't know where funding will come from, but we're starting with a study to see what that would be. So. And there's probably some representatives here that would like to address the board if that's okay.
I have a question for me.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Yeah.
We were all poised a couple of years ago to get money from the state during what they call the Curry Dog Bill. I believe there's a move to reinstate that for this coming year. Have you got any information on that? Because that might assist with some of this.
Yes. So Curry Dog is in Centure, you know, it hasn't been voted out or anything. So it's there. And if oil stays up at its current rate, we project that bucket to fail this fall. Association of Counties is spitting below in both September. So we do have some money coming that way. That would be unbudgeted, you know, revenue for us. Certainly some of it could go up there. But we do also have verbal agreement on, on row 25 on the Trail County line. There as well too for some of it. I've been working on Trail County and trying to reset wheel two to see if they're willing, but they're half in on it, but I haven't heard.
Talking about the gravel portion or the pavement portion?
Well, to, to put pavement out east of the Piler.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah. East of one, remaining one to the river. Yeah. I haven't heard if they're committed to that or not. So. But we'll see if that money comes in. I'm not going to obligate or recommend the, you know, obligate that to anything until it's in our county. Things can change really fast. So.
Just kind of reading the tea leaves that even if that money comes in, that's not going to solve whatever portion we would have left to solve this problem.
It wouldn't solve the whole thing. I, I don't think, I'd be surprised if that kind of money would get us where we need to be. It could help. And part of that study is that there's different ways we could. Maybe we don't have to improve the entire road. Maybe we could do parts of it and get most of the people access and stuff. And other parts of that study, I have Conner 33, West of Madville. Yeah, West of Madville, I'm coming with 11. Right west of County 5, right near the one underwater too. Those are two right paved road that go under there. 11 is first, County 5 is second and 33 is third to go under. And when 33 goes under, that's a big issue. You know, you take all those folks in the Gilby area, they gotta go around. And there was a time where the first time in, in your bar. Anybody that works in the highway department now are 40 year veterans in there. We lost county when all 11, 33 and 5 were down. 2002, right north of Villas was over through a river. That went down too underwater. Then that was really an issue. So that luckily that one was short-lived, but the County 2 part, but.
Here, you haven't mentioned the people. Some is the Bradshaw this morning, some think of the people east of the Burden Edition.
Oh, yeah.
And they have no access whatsoever. When that road goes down, they, in fact, you were talking about a few years ago, somebody had to go out and had a heart attack. So.
Yes.
There is no road access there.
Correct. That one, we did apply for a draft for brick, for a gap. Folks at State Farm Emergency Services thought that would be a good fit in that case.
Yeah, we're back here.
No, we won't get back to all of the July 4th, that right. So now just to keep it on that, the last time we gave all the money out last year. All the money went to Blue States. Yeah.
Are there any federal funds that. This is continual flooding. It's an emergency situation many years, almost every year. No federal funds available or FEMA.
Not that I'm aware of. No. The federal governor gets involved if. The damage to the road is significant. I don't involve 33, 5 and 11 are federally enrolled. So you can knock all the fight for FEMA. And it's separate. So like when, when those have damage. That's another part of the reason why we guys do improvements for our own future. Pocket work, so to speak. But there, the qualification per site is so big, we never qualify. We basically, if you put it plainly is we, we'd have to lose a bridge. Like the whole bridge would have to wash, show it and the new bridge would have to go in. That'd be the main entry project that would have to happen before we did funds. But they only put it back to where it was. Same with FEMA. They only put it back where they don't improve. They don't do anything figure and measure which. We're going to help our cause, but. That's a challenge with FEMA. Yeah. So.
You know, we're aware of all those problems, but from our perspective, the biggest problem is. Financial and there just isn't an answer on financial right now. I, you know, I think the only answer is we're going to have to do this by bits and pieces.
Or somehow get earmarks, the legislature, the legislature. I don't know how that would happen. Like the Fargo flood diversion. This project is, you know, compared to something like that. I'm sure there's thousands of these in the state. And we have lots of examples where people, they've gone up and flooded throughout the whole town. And they brought up the. Burden Edition on there and other areas, but. Only reason I've brought this one up in the past is it is. Causes a lot of problems. Yeah. I think there are some folks here that would like to address the board. That serves separately.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Honorable listeners, thank you for your time. My family, I, we bought our home in two thousand three, along this small section of road, it's five miles, and I know that sounds like a lot, and I think about a hundred miles, the county seems kind of small. We bought our house in two thousand three, closed in September, and we were shocked in the spring. We suddenly put in the yard. The water came up for about four days and it went down, and then the following year, we were shocked it happened again. We didn't have any warning that this would happen, we bought our house along the river, sometimes people say, well, you should have expected that you didn't expect. One of the selling points when we bought our home was county road five. I've never lived on a dirt road before, so it was easy to see that this is a big, wide, it's crowned, good engineering. And so that was a selling point for us. Unfortunately. It flooded almost every year to the point that the road was closed until about two thousand eleven, and then it came really close until two thousand nineteen. Since two thousand nineteen, it flooded four times, plus an additional two times this, this year along this strip of law. And when that happens, we don't, we don't have access, but. I have a professional job, what I do in the morning is I get on our four-wheeler with mud clothes on. And I take my four-wheeler across the field, over to a car that replaces the Grand Forks, Gulf Coast. Then I change clothes in the backseat of my car, I drive to work, and I drive home, change clothes, get back on my four-wheeler. Or I'll come across some of the people here, they haul their children to school and use it side by side across the same field. It's important to know here, those aren't our field. We don't own those, our neighbors are gracious, and they are understanding. Importantly, here is that I'd like to invite you guys, all of you, to get your cars tonight, come up and take a drive up our road. It's only five miles, but for the last eight weeks or so, this road has been all but abandoned. As Mr. West said, this thing sat underwater for about six weeks, which does terrible damage to gravel. And it was, it was really nice when the floodwaters first receded, boy, the crews that he mentioned were out there, Johnny on the spot, they were out there, I think the first day that they were open. Working, and then a few days later, the water came back up again, we haven't seen anybody out there since. And when the water comes up and does this damage to the road, cars can't drive on it. Until an adequate number of pickups have gone down, it's been made a trail that cars can drive on, my wife drives a Buick SUV. She can't leave the house until enough pickups have gone by, do that. One big fear that we have, we have is that if someone has a medical emergency while this road is flooded, as you mentioned. There'd be no access other than helicopter, and that would only be if the weather is good enough to land a helicopter. If it's not, I'm afraid somebody would do something foolish to try to get help for a loved one. I threw this water, and we get about a foot and a half of fast flowing water that goes over the top of our road. But that's my fear, we have, with us today, we have a fire, fire chief, preventable fire, would like just a few minutes to speak as well. We come before you tonight to ask for your help, hats in our hands, we're asking for your help. This is a dire situation. We would be, we would ask that at least the low spots be filled there. And that, I don't know how much that would be, we would ask that maybe the ditch could be dug deeper so that when the river floods, it would flow south to north along the road. I'm not an engineer, none of us are engineers, but we do trust those that are engineers, that a solution could be found, if attention could be, could be given to this. But you have, we do understand that there's not enough money to do everything that people ask for. But in my very non-scientific approach, I opened up Google Earth and counted homes, and I counted twenty-two homes along this five-mile stretch, that's twenty-two families. That lose access, we, we can't get in, we can't get out, and, and also I can tell you from experience of those of us with dogs. Or pets that get trapped outside with the water come up, we do foolish things to get, to take care of our pets. We do have families living on both sides, the east and the west side of county road five. So a solution would have to be made for both, and in my mind, again, I'm not an engineer, I do trust those people that are engineers. In my mind, we, this might require ring dikes, ring dikes around the house or two. That would be left in the profession, but this is a real, real issue. Affecting a lot of good people. Yeah, which is real. Thank you. Anyone else?
So I definitely, Mr. Bradshaw, I want to see him, the, 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 man will volunteer fire department. And, yeah, just echo what Tom said, I mean, my big concern for this stretch of road in our district is, is the safety issue. Like you said, if we had a medical emergency or a fire. We have no way of getting, so it's kind of a scary, it's kind of a scary situation. For us, the issue is always time, if it's something serious, that means. Times of the essence, right, so as a volunteer department, we're already. Struggling to get there on time because everybody has to get to the hall and the scene, so it already takes more time than we'd like, but if, yeah, if you don't have a good road to get there, then. Time is definitely against us, and like Tom said. We don't have very many options, helicopter, maybe we could get the county water rescue team to come help us get some of the property, but higher than a lot of time, so. Yeah, for, for us, it's a safety. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I think we're, we're aware of the safety problem, we've heard them before from other areas, so it's, we know it's a dire situation.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Yes.
Hi, my name is Dr. Markale, I am the pastor over at Thrive Community Church. Moved here sixteen years ago to serve our community, and. We love Grand Forks, we love these Grand Forks, when we saw Cabela's, we knew we were home. County Road number five is a great place to live, other than about five weeks in here. I think Tom spoke well when he said it gets neglected, we're not here to be a greasy reel or a squeaky wheel, we, we just need more than. That we've heard it before, we need something done, and what I know about eating an elephant is you do it one bit at a time, one bite at a time. So, I wonder if maybe we just start allocating a little bit every year, so that eventually we catch up. And instead of it being this monstrous project, now we not get out over the next ten years. Area, when my wife and I, four kids, moved to our home there sixteen years ago, we didn't even know that was flooding, we didn't hear it from the realtor. And I guess maybe that's on us, we did come from a place that was as flat as. The other thing I'd say is, some of these folks, their property may go into water like ours does, I don't know, because we can't get out to assess anybody else's. But we own eight and a half acres of beautiful land and a nice home, and. Ninety-five percent of it was under this much water. For two weeks. This year and two years ago, so anything, I found my garden hose about a hundred and fifty yards in the woods last week. From where it was. So it's not something I think that we can just brush off and say, well, you can figure it, it's the only thing that goes. You know, you are our guys, you're our team, and we need our team to step up, we gotta do, even if it's a little, and a little, and a little. I'm one of the guys that's gonna be looking at a rain dike, because, you know, it's devastating, it causes you great anxiety to see. The Turtle River from me to you, the corner of my house, it was last time, it was ninety-eight. And so you've got the home smell, you gotta keep your dogs out. You gotta make sure you have enough groceries, you gotta make sure the electricity doesn't. Go off, because then you lose everything, I mean, it is. We took pictures, we have Facebook stuff for you guys to look at, but seriously, it is, you just can't imagine until you take a drive out there, like, oh my gosh, this is happening in our county. So, let's, let's bite off some of that elephant a little bit, that's all we're asking, and help us do our BDO, so we can help you. We don't wanna do some of that lake work, so I just, I need some advice on that. Some cost share, and most kinds of things are, did we bring that to you or is there somebody else we're bringing that to? I know some of this stuff is convoluted.
Pointing to the water, water, water.
I'm pointing you, Tom.
Hey, thank you so much for listening, appreciate it.
We, luckily I can. I think we have to have a, kind of a long-term solution. Engineering gets involved, one of the problems, I think, is that there's two problems, first of all, is getting in and out of there on the road, which. You know, that can be solved with a lot of money, whether we can find it or not, I don't know, but that won't solve your overlap flooding, and I'm not sure there is a solution on that, but.
Well, I think County Road five has a lot to do with the flooding, the way that water cannot move, it gets stuck because the. Call for time of breaks are just not big enough.
I mean, yeah. Sometimes that happens, but water's got a really funny way of finding its way back around where.
It, it, it does, but also when there's really good drain tiles that creates such great runoff. That, that becomes an issue too.
Well, I know, I know. Yes, sir.
Speaking of offhand, my name is Tom Purdue, I'm presently serving as the chairman of the Grand Forks County Water Resource District. I got a call from one of the gentlemen the other day asking me to come up for this, and I thought I just might explain to you, not taking away what, what Nick just said, but. One of the small changes that is in the work that you may not be aware of is we're working on. A new dam for the Turtle River. It's primarily being, being conducted by the NRCS, the National. What, Department of Resources. At the present time, it's still just in its, its baby steps, its infancy, but we're looking at what's called a triad dam. Where like Laramore and all these other hate dams are put in, they're all considered wet dams, a dry dam is you have the same. Embankment, but there'd be a swath in the middle of it, and what that would do is all that water that's coming from north of. Northwood, our villa, south, southwest of Thompson, it all flows into that Turtle River watershed, it would gather, this is gonna be just east of McKenna. If it. At all, and what it would do is it would capture a lot of that water and then slowly release it, rather than having the big. Wave of water with a crest and all that that we have now.
I'll interrupt for a second, by dry dam, you mean at some point that the dam will be, it doesn't retain water left the.
Two weeks later, it should be dry.
Yeah, so it's, it's a holding system for us.
The problem up there around Man, Manville, I'm sure you're perfectly aware, but the fact that you've got all this watershed that's feeding all that water to there, and then the, the Red River is very high. So you're not, you're getting some current flow there, but you're not getting a lot, so it all backs up because it drains a very, very large area. But right now, that dam, it's just, like I said, a dam with a hole in the middle of it, and it would slow down the water, and then two weeks later, it would be dry. A lot less expensive, a lot less problem with it, but. I said, that's what we have, hope from right now.
Is that supported locally in the McKenna area? Does people have their support putting it in?
I didn't actually answer that question.
It's, I'm just wondering, because I know, I, I would wonder.
It's, it's iffy at this point. I can't say whether it will actually be built. That would be through the NRCS, the Water Resource District would be responsible for purchasing some of the, the land that it would be pooled up on for a short time.
Question? Yeah.
What, what portion of this problem is solved by something like that, and this is a master problem for many places, it's a great question.
No, I.
I think we've got all the other things made up, right?
I couldn't even tell you what the percentage of improvement it would be, it's, it's not much.
Appreciate you.
Any other comments?
Chairman, both members, like, they didn't ask me to talk, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things, I, and Chief Nowoski of Fire Department talking about. Response, and there's talk about just help the town, just use the Perdition there. It's, this, county five is a substantial problem for us, we do have the ability to get in there with our airboats, but unlike. South of town here, where we save equipment, we have, we have AEs, we got first responder bags, we got cots, we got squad cars, because we're going across. Hundred and something feet of water up here, it's all boat, and we're going as fast as we can in this airboat. And trying to render the aid that we're capable of doing this for responders and getting them out. I believe, I don't know if it's anybody here, but I believe we responded and extracted a, a pregnant lady out of there this spring. Because of course of the time, what we expect through the gate, go under that long, but it does pose problems for us. I, and maybe Nick can comment on this further, but. Every situation is different, you look east of interstate, maybe these two guys will disagree with me, but east of interstate, there's a lot of ring dikes. And there's a lot of farmers, and we can drive farm to farm on our airboats up there with the water, everything flooded. And they're fine, I'm fine, I'm fine, I'm fine, not that they signed up for it, they got, they got tractors, they got bullets, generators, et cetera, they're pretty self-sustained. They've been dealing with it over there for several years, I don't know how long the turtle's been a problem on that side of county five, maybe Bob knows, I'm not sure, but.
We've been a problem for forty years, I was on the sheriff's office, it was always a problem.
Yeah, it seems like the last, you know, the last decade, it's just been getting worse, and I don't know what or who's to blame on that outside of maybe mother nature. But it is a little bit more of a challenge for us to get to those areas for services.
Anyone else?
Yes, question for you. Wes, what, what's the study again that you're talking about, how long it will take to figure this out?
It's, and, 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 this, this study over, we asked the water board, and their engineer to get involved, and. I just posed a question, what would it take to make that road dry? It's that simple, what would we have to do to make the road dry during a flood? I'm anticipating, I had a call with their engineer a couple of weeks ago, he's thinking then. Before it's done, so.
Is it only one person or is there a friend?
It's a firm, working on it, yeah, but it's through a privileged engineering, and they brought in, but that's, but that's, they're both. So. Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of data, and a lot of what ifs, and what if you do this, or if you do that, you gotta model it all, and. Create a whole, it's a hydraulic model, photography of the way of the land. It's, it's hard to, I, I have a pretty strong background in hydraulics, but it's, it's hard to model. Water going through a bridge, plus if once it gets high enough, it'll start breaking out and go this way, or it'll start going that way, so you gotta get all those weird, public ears, but. All those breakouts in there and figure out where the water goes. One thing I can say is we, we won't be able to do anything about the water that's coming. Can't stop the water, you get a ten-inch rain in Emmeral, it's coming, there's not much we can do, but. If we can keep the road dry, that's the benefit. The challenge is, if you raise the road. And if the bridge isn't bigger, or another opening is a bigger, you hold more water back, and we don't, we can't do that without. Finding forward adjustments or making sure it's all designed all right, and those landlords are aware of it. So the goal is, is still to allow the same amount of water to come through, because that whole area is essentially comes to be tight place. That's still gonna happen, if I, my, we can't do much about that, if water's gonna go, it's gonna fill in little areas, and. That's still gonna happen by my, we can't do much about that. If water's gonna go, it's gonna fill in little areas and Chairman of the Water Board mentioned, you know, the Red River backs out, that's gonna do, it's gonna do, we can't stop that. I don't know how to stop that anyway. So, um. I answered your question.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? Any other comments? You know, we're aware of the problem. I can't run up there tonight, but I'll try to run up. Just looks tugging at my heartstrings. He was a former student of mine years ago, so.
I just for the board's knowledge, I mean, I got pictures, I got videos. Our sheriff's department did a drawn image of a whole area this spring. We surveyed the flood damage on the road this spring when the water went down. Um, we have quite a bit, well, not quite a bit, but we have some damage, sure. So.
I mean, I just wanna see the visuals.
They're not neat, but, you know.
Does the height of the Red River crest affect that or is it mostly the turtle coming through there?
Well, the height of the, I think the height of the red slows it down, so.
Yeah, because I was gonna say, actually this year our crest is not very high. I mean, it was a sustained crest for probably almost thirty days. I've never seen one like that. But it was not high. So if it's higher, is the problem even greater out there?
I think so.
Yeah.
When the red comes up, the turtle can't fully empty. In Mambal.
Right, right.
No, the red will that crest itself gets back and that's just above the interstate. But west of the interstate, it can still flow. The whole time the turtle is flowing. But not as much as if the red was down. Yeah.
Well, any, in terms of Turtle River flooding, certainly we're flooding on the Red River at some level as well, so it's not like one can happen without the other.
Usually, usually you didn't have flood of the summer nineteen. Fourth of July twenty twenty, I remember that day, um. South of Emmeral had it was.
Ten inches. Ten inches and four hours.
Yeah, it was, it was even bigger than that because we had, the whole county got four to five inches of rain, but South of Emmeral, Chester, Pleasant View, Old Bill Township just got hammered. Major damage. Well, that's all Turtle River watershed. It's all water. Freshwater, Trulies and the one of those in Emmeral. Anyway, yeah, it's all Turtle River watershed. So that was a case where it was pretty much all Turtle River. Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we'll, we're aware of the problem. We'll try to come up with some sort of long-term solution. It's not gonna happen overnight, you know, just like the Fargo diversion, that's a ten-year project, the deck project here in town was ten years or longer, so a solution has been a month to years, so you're gonna have to be prepared to continue the battle for a while and hopefully we can come up with not a total solution, at least some partial solutions to solve.
So we appreciate your help there.
The main thing is to get the engineers' report.
Yeah.
And then we go from there to see what it's gonna cost. Now, we may have some things coming up here in the future that the county is trying to do that might increase some funding for Mr. West, so we'll see.
Thanks, appreciate your time. So that called today by the way.
Come on up, Bill, you're next.
Patience, thank you. Present this information from CMTA. Uh, this is a project proposal for what discussed the, for a couple of years now with the aging condition of brick and concrete cooling units in the courthouse or on the courthouse roof, uh, these DX units, there's three of them that that, uh, serve the courthouse. Current technology that's there is antiquated and has been essentially obsoleted by, by engineering. R twenty-two is what all three of them run on. Purge rent, yeah, R twenty-two in March of twenty twenty-three will be no longer available to be purchased from a supplier, from a supply house or from a contract that there's supply services for repair. Got flat or some of their refrigerant out of them since I've been here and my predecessors dealt with continually charging them, which we should not been able to successfully been stopped. This engineering proposal from CMTA is for the sum of forty-eight hundred dollars to do a study. Provide us the, uh, information on whether the DX units are the best way to go or to go with the chiller proposed platform to serve the whole building as one instead of three separate units. The, uh, the wave of usage right now as far as what's engineered, there, the design, the design scope would be lead towards a chiller platform, an air exchange chiller platform, however, we would have to have this proposal performed in order to know which way is financially more feasible. Whether or not even the building could handle those loads on, on the, as far as from electrical. Why it's designed the way it is right now is because stuff was added as the building was retrofitted and remodeled and not a lot of design or engineering was put into it in order to fix and gauge antiquated system right. This proposal needs to be pursued and if we're sitting in the same situation next spring and we go flat, we're looking at three dead units. It's uncomfortable or with court order. So I think, uh, you know, it would be prudent for, uh, commission approval to, uh, at least move forward with this proposal so we can get some, get some design scope out there and, and get some, get some requests for this made in order to, in order to fulfill this project and get, and get this whole antiquated equipment placed before we're dead in the water.
I, uh, checked with this now, so we have a little capital improvements in here of this, so I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we approve the CMTA engineering service contract. Yeah, take the money out of capital improvements. Okay?
Thank you. That will have commission fair signature on it for me to.
Yes, it will. So we have a motion or a second that there's approval to sign. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, passed and heard the go.
Thank you.
Next, we have public display of fireworks permit.
Public display of fireworks permit request has been approved by the sheriff. Black powder fireworks.
That was my first question.
Wally Township. This is the legal size page and they didn't have legal paper, so they have letter size sheets and the second sheet is the one where you will see that the sheriff has signed up and they pay their two dollar fee.
The fee must, the fee must have been set back in nineteen fifty.
It is in the century code, it's two dollars.
How much?
Two dollars.
We're to collect.
There's a lot of that garbage in century code.
I was gonna say, that's not gonna fill the century code, it's Mr. West.
That can be recorded.
Okay.
Question about that.
Yes.
It's a more than one display. This is apparently displays for customer.
Looks like it's two days to twenty seven. Well, I mean, it looks like two.
Product for prospective customers. June twenty-seventh through July fourth, or fifth.
There'll be a show on the fourth as well, okay?
This is yours on board is that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, Andy, this is Wally, North Dakota, is that Wally Township, Wally Township.
The self-intel, yeah.
Well, that's all by the.
On eighty-one.
Eighty-one, those guys out there. There's a house, two houses right east of those guys.
I believe this is the one they rent the space from the homeowner, I believe.
Oh, that's on the east side of the road.
I believe so. I could be wrong, but I believe that's where this.
Homeowners. At now, it's probably so. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I will make that motion second.
Motion approved and second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passed. Yeah, we're going on to special event permit.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Bud Plowage wants a special permit for an anniversary party. Should I talk to you about this one?
Yeah, it's all out at Turtle River.
In the state park.
So you probably don't know anything about this, Sheriff Schneider. So you're generally needed continuing upon the sheriffs.
When is this supposed to take place here?
August seventh is June.
And it could be a little more specific.
Yeah, it is, but June is. Using woodland lodge dining area. Is there any? Do you want it to stay part?
Commissioner and Chairman Paul, members of the commission, uh, so that the state park does have a full-time, uh, officer out there. Park, park ranger, licensed enforcement officer. Uh, it's still in the county, so, uh, they should be running that through.
They have to have alcohol permit through us.
Yeah, the, uh, and, and they go through the, the same thing that, uh, the lady from Hatton, uh, failed to do. The problem is it's just not widely publicized that if you're gonna be serving alcohol to a bunch of people in the county, you need to get approval through the sheriff's office. So I can, if I could get a copy of this, I could reach out to them. Yeah, it looks like if it's an anniversary period, I don't, I don't foresee any issues, even that it is patrolled by, uh, state or security personnel, so.
I think, I think we want them to, uh.
Specify date.
Specify date, yeah, this is not gonna run all through June or whatever. We need specify a date and they have to have your approval, but we will prove it. We have a motion.
I would make that.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. They don't follow through sheriff, let us know.
Sure will.
Regional Airport Authority Board appointment. Didn't change it on that, we didn't see it either.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, uh, Cindy Peaches' term on the Regional Airport Authority Board will expire at the end of June, so she would like us to continue to serve on that board, so I need a motion to appoint Cindy Peaches.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Peaches back up. Director of administration, I think we can scratch, scratch him. We'll let him go on vacation till this. Absolutely. Miss Womsted, how are you today?
Mister Chair, members of the commission, I am doing well and I do not have anything to report today. Thank you.
Hey. Committee reports, uh, Mr. Ryan, do you have anything for us?
The only thing that I have is, uh, we're, we've invested in the career impact academy, CIA. And last week they held a series of six one-hour sessions on different parts of it. And I thought I'd like to go see what some of that is about. So I went to the section, session on robotics and engineering and the one on, uh, aerospace and, and automation or drones, that kind of thing. And, uh, it, it, there's a really well organized, uh, EDC's been involved in it. Uh, there's enough road, like people are, the, uh, industries in this town are really stepping up. I think we're gonna have a good training academy for kids in the last couple of years of high school and then even after they get out of high school, pointing them in the direction of some of these things. And especially the, uh, there's a health section to get certified as CNAs and then maybe work into, uh, help the ends and some of those things. And, uh, I was not in the room to provide the expertise, but I just listened just to see how it looked like they were organizing it. They're, they're well on their way. I think it's gonna be a really good thing.
Mr. Ross, anything?
Uh, Fair Board has been meeting every Wednesday up to the fair, which is June twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, and I think the manager's met with Andy. Providing deputies out there, so, so we have another meeting tomorrow night, five-thirty at Fairgrounds.
Are there any issue, any issues of buildings and?
Well, yeah, okay, so, um, Clay, the engineer?
Or Cleveland.
Yeah, he's been out.
Oh, yeah.
He's been out, he was out, um, was it last Friday? No, the Friday before and did an inspection. There were just a couple of things that he saw, otherwise he had no concerns, but he thought those two things should be taken care of. Uh, one thing, uh, the Fair Board did get is, uh, Dwayne Sanden passed away and left the Fair Board sixty-five thousand dollars. Well, so part of that money is gonna be used to complete, I mean, do those repairs. So, uh, but the report was supposed to be here by this meeting and it's not here, so. Other than that, oh, tomorrow morning at eight-thirty is the nine-one-one director, breakfast over there at, uh, eighty building, so anybody wants to go?
Yeah, tomorrow.
Tomorrow's a problem for me too.
Yeah, I'll be there. You know about it, right? Okay.
Oh, I meant, you heard the report from Gold with France, I meant with this. After we're just to board and and, uh, then Mr. Ring and you and I were both at the brick meeting today, some positive things about the base and Grand Sky, so those are all looking pretty good right now. And that's, that's it for today. Unfinished business, anything there, Ms. Nelson?
Mister Chairman, the commission, I was asked to put the CL and foot contract, uh, our invoice on the agenda. And it's ten thousand five oh three oh eight and we're requesting that be paid on a capital improvements instead of, uh, with a list and grounds.
Okay, can we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passed. Then, uh, only commission association standing committees.
Mister Chairman, the commission, if you wanna serve on any, you need to let me know by July.
There'll be a rush for that. So keep your door closed. And the Department of Transportation solicitation of view.
I think.
Sounds like, uh, Mr. West practiced.
By June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, if you have any comments.
Special replacements, Grand Forks, Green, other counties.
Scroll down.
Yeah.
Numbers, I think just two, yeah. So.
Three locations, four locations. Cool, stop.
Locations two, yeah, okay, yes, I am aware of this and the water board's aware of it and I did respond with uh, the number two. Location two, see that's up on state thirty-two, yes. Um, they got. Um, they got a big structural pipe pipe that's, uh. Yeah, ten foot round, yeah. Um, my comment I have there is, they were proposing, well, they got a cool state thirty-two down. Up in the northwest form of the county. And they were, in their letter, they were debating whether or not they would just detour traffic around. Or build a temporary bypass adjacent to it, and I highly encourage them. My comment to them was, you need to build an onsite detour, otherwise they're gonna put all that thirty-two traffic onto a county road. And that would not be good. And unless they wanna overlay when they're done.
Yeah.
No, basically. Um, and I, I think if they did do a detour, the state would treat us fairly and, and work with us, us one way or another. I don't think they were forcing anything down, they, they never had before on any other jobs. I don't see why that philosophy would start now. Um, the location three, that's drain eleven under High Twenty-Nine. Um, the water board's aware of that, and recommended that they contact the water board, I made a gentle comment to that, that. Now would be a great time to assess the elevation and size of that structure that's being replaced. Maybe they want something bigger, maybe smaller, yeah, I've dealt with it, but, uh, you know, bigger, deeper or something, and just respond to that way, but. Otherwise, um, I don't think it directly affects the county unless. Two is detoured onto the bars. Location three, they would just, they, they would, uh, divert one way over to the other. Make a one-way trip.
Give me a rough idea where that's at, that location three.
North of Grand Forks, about, north of the North Interchange, about three miles, so.
Oh, I got.
Between Grand Forks and Mammel.
That doesn't help, man, that doesn't help county road five.
Zero.
Okay. Respondents.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that initial use permit, I emailed you because actually, June first was the page of the public hearing, so.
Oh, so that's. Water education tours, we saw that. And we're down to a German, I think. Second, all in favor?
Yeah.